They denied, the family were denied.
Okay. It's seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the Village Board and put their board meeting to order. Let's see, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please have also full silence during the meeting. Uh, let's see. Another announcement is the village board will convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eight five one F. I hope for an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item six, public appearances and citizens' comments. Do you have anything you wanted to say, Kenny, before?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, item seven, approval of the consent agenda.
Tom goes approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item eight, finance and personnel committee. Item eight, discussion and consideration for order review twenty nineteen correction of errors. Lynn, do you wanna speak on this? We did it.
Yeah, Drake actually ended up talking to the assessor after trying to.
It was a couple of years ago, they said they were, they were in the house and it was, um, not finished, but they mistakenly did mark it down as finished. And then they did make the correction at the request of the property owner. Um, they ignored our inquiry about if they would cover the cost of the correction.
Wait, I'm confused. They ignored our inquiry?
Correct. They, it is in our contract that we, um, what's the term that we use? That we release them of any and all liability associated with.
Oh, so they're not liable for it?
Correct.
Nice. Well, those kind of contractual things are generally about worth the paper they're printed on. If we wanted to push the issue, um, maybe at this time we don't want to push the issue, but, um, I think we discussed this before, that we might wanna consider this as their contract comes up. Yes. Or renewal. Um, I think it shows negligence on their part. Definitely, I think. When you say they ignored our inquiry.
They, we asked for a response in writing and they left it out of their response.
I think, I think, I think we should still ask for a response in writing.
Okay.
Regardless of what the contract says.
Sure.
Contracts do not really cover, um, non liability. If one takes that, or, you know, it would still be a decision by, by a judge. These things are common, of course, but, anyway. I think we should still push for an answer in writing.
Okay.
I concur.
Are you?
So I don't know if you wanna motion on that, or just wanna direct Drake to inquire further at the direction of the board as to why no answer in writing was provided for their.
Do you have any interest in making the taxpayer whole at this point? And then attempting this on the backside?
Yes, I do, and I guess I thought we had already discussed that. Yeah, I think, I think they're probably overdue on.
So, yeah.
Thank you. We need a motion to issue the refund.
Right, and just a motion for that, right?
Yep.
I would move that we approviation of the refund of tax on.
Thirteen thousand eight hundred and then a total amount of the.
Three fifty-five thirty-three. And I think it says in here somewhere how much that refund is.
Yeah, three fifty-five thirty-three.
Okay, right, yep. I took you in the, I know, I saw the figure somewhere.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? You read on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Because it was, in your minutes, you put in there that you instructed Drake to do that, so it's his minutes for him to request a response. Okay. Um, consideration discussion, selection of firms to develop the compensation and classification plan.
So I reached out to three firms to solicit proposals for the development of a compensation and classification plan for the village. Baker Tilly, Carlson Detman, and Gov HR. We received a proposal from Baker Tilly and Carlson Detman. They're both attached. Gov HR did not submit one. Um, Baker Tilly's came in at a cost of thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars plus expenses. And Carlson Detman's came in at ten thousand dollars plus expenses. Uh, they're discussing with Lynn. We both thought that Baker Tilly's proposal was more comprehensive and looked like they would result in a better product, which is why you see the recommendation to go with Baker Tilly. Um, the board preferred to go with the lower cost option. Carlson Detman is a respected firm as well that has completed these in the past. So I think we would still get a, we would still get a quality product at the end. But I do think that Baker Tilly had a more comprehensive approach as far as, uh, redoing, uh, job descriptions, discussing things with employees, having meetings, coming out and having meetings. Um, and when it's something as sensitive as compensation with employees, I thought that the items that they had laid out were worth the extra cost. Uh, and if the board chooses to approve, we would just ask to include in the motion that to be taken from the undesigned fund balance, which Lynn has checked and there is sufficient funds to cover that cost.
You're the one that asked, you guys have to.
I, I just didn't.
Deal with this.
It looked.
Looks like there's a better choice. I'm just, aside, where is our designated fund standing?
Um.
Roughly.
It's, it's over a hundred thousand. I was just working on it today and I had that.
Well, it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's sufficient. We've had to take.
A lot more than sufficient.
Yeah, yeah.
Larger than what the auditor said we should be, that they recommend we carry.
Yeah, and the big thing, the other is, is if you have sufficient monies and you're doing, you're using it for one-time expenditures, which this is not going to be something ongoing, it's a one-time expenditure that will. Well, I think just once it'll be.
It would be an annual expense, though.
Well, it's something we desperately need as far as I'm concerned. So, a lot overdue. It's the recommendation of a committee or recommendation?
Staff recommendations.
Staff recommendation, meaning committee or just?
Myself, my administration.
Okay.
And it came from the board, so I can see why it came back to the board.
I guess I wasn't here when that happened, so that's one question.
Do you want any background on why we're doing this?
No.
Oh, you don't stay in that part of it?
Yeah, I do, I do. I've been there too, so I know. Yeah.
Well, I would like to move approval of the Baker Tilly proposal as recommended by staff for the compensation and classification plan.
I would second.
Can we, with the, where the funding for it's coming?
Yes, you said that, yes, with funding coming from undesigned funds.
Any further discussion? If you don't, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Okay. Item B, who, no, item C, discussion consideration, adopt the HRA plan through North Shore Bank.
Lynn, do you want me to take this, or would you like to?
You can go ahead if you want.
So I'm not sure how many of you are, but currently upon retirement from the village, there's a payout of, of sick time that goes to the employee. This, that goes in the cash dispersment to them. Setting up this plan, but instead of giving a cash dispersment, we put it into a health retirement account, which would be save the employee and the village on taxes associated with the dispersment. Um, it's for communities that still do some payouts at retirement. This is pretty common for them to do it. It's both beneficial to the employee and to the village. Um, we did meet with employees and there was no qualms about moving forward with something like this. It's helpful to employees as they, if they retire prior to being Medicare eligible to cover that gap, because they can use the HRA funds for health insurance premiums and cover health insurance costs. And their total value of the dispersment is much, is significantly higher due to the lack of taxes being taken out of it. So if we did approve these, it would be, we would say, we would change, it would change the personnel handbook. And then also, we would be setting this up through North Shore Deferred Comp. There would be no, the employee would not have a choice at that point. Um, it would be dispersed into an HRA. There wouldn't be a cash option any longer.
The deferred comp piece, the employee would, could elect to use North Shore for a deferred comp or could stay with their current plan. Um, North Shore just requires we offer the deferred comp to the employees if we have a health retirement account with them. So that's.
Are there recurring costs on this that we don't have under the current payout?
There is an annual fee, once the money is paid into the account for the employee, it becomes a relationship between North Shore and the employee. The village is completely out of it, so there's like an eighteen dollar annual fee that that's borne by the employee.
And you said there were no objections?
People seemed anything receptive to the idea.
Seems to me like we had it that way for a while and then we went back to that.
We had, um, what we had was you could use that money to continue health insurance through the village. So you would stay on the village's plan and the village would.
Oh, so we had that option?
Yeah, um, but we did away with that, it's been a while ago because there. Yeah, there came to be a Gatsby ruling, so the auditors required us to, what does whole PAB stand for? Um, we would have to do some additional accounting to make sure that we had the funds available to accommodate those things in separate accounting, so we're like, let's just pay it out. This is kind of the best of both worlds, so the village can pay it out and be done with it. The employee still gets the advantage of having their health insurance.
Okay. So is there a way that you wanna attack these resolutions, or should we?
Maybe one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
And just for the record, um, and this was my, the, the resolution numbers should be nineteen twenty-four, nineteen twenty-five, and nineteen twenty-seven. And I think we have them different because we had kinda had them done. We had them for five and seven, four, five and seven.
Are we currently involved with North Shore, is that? So.
It was a company, I don't think.
Did we solicit?
They were at a couple of different conferences. I saw them at a conference, ran into them, learned about their program. Um, and then Jeff Sturven ran into them at a conference and learned about their program. And I don't know that there's a lot of other comps out there that are doing things.
But we're.
It's a common one.
Confident in their bona fides? I mean, I don't know who they are, or. Do we have?
Yeah, they're long established.
No, you would be approved in entering into a contract as part of this.
Got it.
I can't remember what she said, but they are one of the largest, in terms of plans like this, they're one of the largest providers in the state.
I mean, if you're interested, they do have other information.
Well, I soon checked out their legitimacy.
We've been working on this since before.
I just wanted to make sure it was.
A long time.
I'm sorry, since before what?
Before, since before Brian left, but.
Oh, okay.
If anybody's interested in looking at this kind of information, they gave us much of that. So, yeah, I mean, I, we were very comfortable with what they presented and and what it appears they will be providing for us.
So are they actually a bank or?
I don't know if it's a bank.
Is it a bank with an investment branch of?
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's what I thought. Branch on a lake somewhere. Blue Mountain Road. Doesn't border on. Chord. I was gonna check.
Well, I would move approval of resolution nineteen twenty-four to personnel handbook to include payout of sick leave to HRA plan.
Hold on a second.
Any further discussion?
Wait, did you say twenty-four? Yeah. It's twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven.
Yeah.
We have, we have that written in.
We are clear, clear.
Oh.
It's right on the resolution.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Uh, item two, adopt the resolution R nineteen twenty-five, adopt the North Shore Deferred Comp Plan.
I would so move to adopt the resolution nineteen twenty-five, adopt the North Shore Deferred Plan.
I'll second.
I seen in the refletive, you have options for employees, so they don't have to roll that.
Right.
The deferred comp piece.
Correct, correct, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Item three, adopt resolution R nineteen twenty-seven, create HRA plan with North Shore Bank.
I just had one, I think, correction. Um, on the second page, number four, the extenuating and documented circumstances. Um, petition the village board to access their HRA account prior to being Wisconsin Termination to obtain approval of such request, low and required, a three-quarter vote, and then since that comes up. Is that the board?
Uh, when I was printing them for this book, I noticed that that was still highlighted on there, and I changed it to the village board. I think we were questioning whether that should be in, and it seemed to make sense that it would be there.
So, okay, I'm wondering about the highlighting as well.
Okay, yeah.
So that is the board.
Yeah.
There must be. Sure, the one that's in here. It's on the second page?
Yeah.
Page thirty-six.
Item four, and you've got four.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's. Okay, now we approve of resolution nineteen twenty-seven.
Second. Any further discussion? If you don't, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, motion carries. Uh, parks and recreation, item eight, discussion consideration, resolution nineteen twenty-eight, approve the village to declare its comprehensive outdoor recreational plan.
Uh, the plan is attached. This came before the Parks and Rec Committee at their last meeting. Um, in general, um, this lays out potential improvements and priorities for recreational opportunities within the village. Um, it's a five-year plan of, it's, the plan does state that everything, and it will not necessarily be completed. It is just things that the village has identified as, that they would like to have. Um, it is required to be on record with the DNR in order to be eligible for state and federal administered recreation grants, which was the impetus for completing the plans to be able to have access to those funds when and if they do become available. It is attached to your packet.
Yeah, and it looked, I was just gonna comment that it looks like it's a very comprehensive study. Um, and it looks like they contacted the citizens as well and got a fair amount of response from them as well. I was just kinda puzzled, but I found this out later. Um, I remember over by our place, that back in the cul-de-sac above us, there was that triangular piece of property that one time was, was a park designated as a park. So I drove over there and there was a fence running down the middle of it. And so I talked to one of the property owners and it was, was it deeded back to them, or did they purchase it, or?
It was deeded back to them, the village at one point. We just were looking at that the other day, that said zoning.
Oh, zone conservation?
Yeah. When was it? It had in there. The year that it was deeded back.
I'll bet you it was in the sixties, wasn't it?
No, no, it was recent, I mean.
It was, it was sort of decided earlier. It was sort of mutual agreement that the village didn't wanna take down another. I, I understand that. I was questioning when it became a park when it sat aside. And I understand that.
Probably at the time of subdivision.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I kinda figured in. I think at the time, there was a, and this has nothing to do with the study, but just to satisfy my own curiosity is that it was deeded as a, or designated as a park because the ordinance said that.
Right.
For so many lots that there had to be so many acreage. Right, I think it was on completion of exonerated lots. A park had to be established. And the village didn't wanna take down the. Essentially, the same thing happened in a more screwed-up manner up in Tower Heights. That's right. Yeah, and, you know, the village didn't really wanna develop more parks, so these things just kinda set on a back burner for a long time. And I think out of all of that, if I'm not mistaken, we now have a, a, um, is it ordinance or a statute where?
The.
Both, um, yeah, the, the law or the developer will just give.
And impact the essentially.
Oh, yeah. That clarifies the other part of the question, too. And, um, do, I'm just going to assume that it's a responsibility of the village to do maintenance on all of the park.
Correct.
Yeah. So along those lines, the, the pond over there, are we responsible for shoveling out a skating rink?
No.
No?
No, that was somebody's idea and it's not being pursued.
Okay.
I mean, there are a lot of ideas in here that were a single person or a couple of people. Um, and they just got, they got hot.
Well, I kinda figured that that's where it was coming from. A lot of this is, you know, wish list stuff.
Right, right.
And if it ever came up, you know, we could at least apply.
They documented all the.
For grants.
Yeah.
But, um, we've also, you know, had numerous discussions with our committee and with the joint committee of, of, like ice rinks. Yeah, yeah. So Chuck, you and Patriot both are on that committee? Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we looked this over and made the corrections and whatever that changes we wanted, we were recommending us.
Okay, and thanks for the time to clarify that. I was just kinda curious. They did a, the people that did this, I think, did a very thorough. I take those from what I saw, yeah. I don't think they glossed over things. It is a nice wish list.
Yes, absolutely.
Would have enough problems with what they have now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Catch up to it, yeah. So, well, we're working on it, a chiseled way. So I'd like to recommend, um, approval of resolution nineteen twenty-eight.
I would second. Any further discussion?
Just take effect immediately.
Has to be accepted by the DNR.
Have to get it to the DNR number and take some of the months.
Yeah, I think I have set it the way. So it's not a done deal.
It's pretty much what it should be. Yeah, Mark had, did get feedback from the DNR officials. And so I'd be surprised if they did not accept it, but I'm fixing them.
I'm sorry.
Mark Roffers is our consulting planner, who reviewed, reviewed this plan after the initial development. Um, and he got feedback from the DNR, incorporated that feedback.
Okay, great.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Item ten, public works, public safety. Item eight, discussion consideration, special event permit, application for block party on Seventh Avenue between Second and Third Street, June twenty-second, twenty nineteen.
Well, this is just a small block party event, neighborhood type thing. Uh, the reason they, we had, originally had been filling out the special event permit is originally they had stated they were gonna have live music. They're no longer gonna have that, so typically that would've come under a street use permit, but they just continued under this, since they had already started it. Um, all the necessary individuals have reviewed it, police PD has just provided their feedback, and so we are recommending approval.
I only have one question. It says, instead of live band, personal speakers, do we have somebody? I guess I'm assuming that the police department has talked to them about the noise level.
Correct, and I think it does state that the speakers will be in the backyards. Is that correct, Lynn?
Yes.
So that does mitigate some of the noise, but yes, PD is aware of the event and if noise becomes an issue, they would address it.
And the alcoholic beverages, I see that they're BYOB coolers?
Correct, no sale.
So, when something like this comes up, do we have any input from non-involved, non-invited neighbors that might be affected? This. This dated, what, six-ten?
I do not believe that.
Six-twenty-two. I probably don't have a lot of problems with this on the face of it, but in the future, if somebody wanted to have a block party and, you know, fifty to a hundred people.
I probably don't have a lot of problem with this on the face of it, but in the future, if somebody wanted to have a, a block party and, you know, fifty to a hundred people, bring your own food, block the street, um, music whether it's live or speakers, I don't know what personal speaker it may be, but um, do we have some way of, of announcing this to the, to the neighborhood that might not be invited, that was going to be affected by potential? Also, the hours are, seem to be noon to eleven.
Yeah.
I'm just bringing this up for future consideration.
Chuck, it's sort of the precedent of the thing. Are we gonna start having block parties all over and closing streets?
I haven't seen this before.
I haven't either.
I'm not, I'm not.
I know other communities.
Just going in your backyard and.
Well, I think that was it, and when they, um, came in and asked about the street use and that, what they'd indicated was there's a lot of young children in the neighborhood and they just thought, if they could get the street closed, it would alleviate their concern about the kids running back and forth and into the streets. They would know that portion of the street is closed. That was, I think, kind of the impetus for them to look at doing a permit. And like you said, we, we originally thought street use and then they mentioned like bands, so now we're like, okay, wow.
Well, and when it says personal speakers, wherever it said that, yeah, personal speakers, I mean, when I used to drive around my sixty, seventy automobile car, you know, it was maybe fifty watts or something like that. Even when I played in a rock band, my amplifier was thirty-five watts. Now, my speakers, my, my system in my car is two-hundred-and-fifty watts.
Yeah, that's my concern too. I, I mean, I, I, I know these people pretty much, but um, how much, how far do we wanna go with these things? If they would've just had a party.
We, we've had a block party for a number of years in our neighborhood.
Yeah.
And we'd go in people's yards and we'd watch the kids.
Most people do.
And ours, they were in our front yard, but.
Big one up on Seventh Avenue.
Worried about them because we were watching and playing with them and it was an afternoon thing, you know, it wasn't a.
If, if, the other thing, if, if we endorse this, how much liability are we putting on ourselves?
They're required to provide us with an insurance certificate. Yeah.
But what would that cover?
It's, it's really kind of unfortunate that we don't have any representatives here today.
I was a little surprised at that, to be honest with you.
Tight timeline here.
Um, and, yeah, and I don't, you know, this timeline seems to be coming up again and again for special events. The last, what, the last three permit applications have been late, like.
And they're the ones that do it year after year after year. They should know better.
Yeah.
I mean, this is something new.
Yeah.
We have changed the, uh, permit, uh, so it's gonna be a receipt of, is it a month prior?
Yeah.
A month prior to the next, uh, public city, committee meetings necessary. And we have started, um, sending people back with their applications if they're not fully complete.
It's just taking a harder stand on some of them.
Which is, so some that would've come to the board prior, we have delayed. And then some angst over it, but it's just establishing that expectation.
Good for you.
And it's good for the applicant as well because if they did have an issue, if they come in too late, then there's no time to resolve anything that we might be able to help them through.
If we would approve this, I would like to see perhaps the police kind of give us a full review of how, after, how it went. For one thing for sure, if we approved this. You know.
Good idea.
Then we know, you know, if it gets out of hand, we'll never do it again. We'll have some guideline, you know. So, um, are they talking putting the concrete barricades up or just police barricades? It said barricades are available from the building, but above that, it's applicant, you know what applicant will need to coordinate this with the Public Works Director. But that's garbage.
Joe, would you, would you use concrete barriers for any of them or just put up?
No, I just put up the river barricades that we usually do.
Would you be involved with that or is that a responsibility?
No, I'm, I'm responsible for putting the, the signage up, um, at least twenty-four hours in advance and to say no parking. And then I'm the one that has to put the barricades up there. And then usually at night, the police department will pull the barricades across, so it's completely roadblock. We usually do that about two o'clock, one, two o'clock in the morning. So there's nobody parked in there or anything, so.
We know that all, there's five houses on that street. And we know that they're all.
Participating?
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
I remember asking, I remember asking that question and she indicated that they were, we didn't ask for something in writing, like, you know, everyone signing off.
It says four houses.
I see four houses. There are staffs, Don Hughes, Burdys and Meter Brooks. Isn't there, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Wayne House and the car of, third and south.
I don't, I don't know, I think I saw that. Yeah, I don't really look at that one.
Do, do you actually deliver those barricades or do they go and pick them up?
No.
I would like to get some assurance that there's some chance for neighborhood objection, I mean, if you live across the street and didn't know about this. On the other hand, I suppose you can trust people to use their better judgment, but.
Well, I think, uh, one of the things, if it gets to be allowed, if we get one complaint, the cops are gonna have to shut it down. And I think it.
So is that why I'm here?
It starts, it does.
No, the staff, she completes all the authority, revoked such permit, we believe such loudspeaker amplifier devices becoming a nuisance.
But that's, that's easier said than done.
Yeah.
I, I, I know that from personal experience with other, uh, who, who's the judge of this? Unless you put it in strict terms, if, if there's one complaint, but, you know, if they go up there with a decibel meter, you might as well not go up there. I suppose we're gonna put this, somehow a reservation, but that, I want, I don't wanna something like this coming for us again in this period of time. I, I wanna, I, I think something like this should be published somehow or at least notification given to neighbors within a reasonable radius that they may be affected by it. There's no reflection on the people that have applied for this, it's just that, who's next? We've already got a lot of, I, I have a lot of complaints on many things to go on in town noise-wise and. Do we draw the line somewhere or do we at least try to give everybody a say in that? If somebody's gonna have a party on Fourth Avenue, between Fifth Street and Sixth, say for example Roger, um, I'd like to know, you know, in advance so that I can question at a public meeting, what kind of music are you gonna have?
Definitely hokey music.
Well, in your case, that's a surprise.
I wouldn't have any problem, but, but, um, yeah.
And, you know, precedent does occur if we do this, then to the next people and say, well, you gave it to them, why can't we have? I just. Why don't they just have it in somebody's backyard? They got, they got a huge backyard. There's a huge backyard between Altman's house and Kerry's little house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Did this go before Public Works Public Safety or is it coming directly to the board?
Well, I see that there's a recommendation there from the restrictions amendment, like from the.
That means for the time, timeline, that's what I'm wondering, right?
I, I did not see it, no.
Public Works signed off on it?
What?
Public Works signed off.
Yeah, the departments.
The departments, I'm, I'm talking about.
I would assume we would have placed it on the Public Works agenda, but, uh, the, it's not attached to it right now, so I'm not. I could run and grab up an agenda from my office if we're interested.
Was that would've been last Wednesday?
It would've been last week.
Yep.
Oh, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have got there in time, right? If everybody signed off on it on Tuesday, Wednesday was the meeting.
That's right, yeah.
So it's coming directly to the board?
Yeah.
So even going through Public Works Public Safety?
And?
And there, and there's no date on the recommendation from the restrictions amendment from the Glares Police Department.
We would've received that recently, within, within the last week probably.
Yeah, the only date is June twenty-second, so there's no other date on here.
I, I've got strong reservations about this and to think that if they, if we say no to them, that's not restricting them not to have a party, but to do it in their backyard.
Correct, not just if we're not closed.
Is there a comment, Joe?
My two cents on it, I signed off on that simply because it's just a road closure to me. But my issue of it is, is when we have something downtown that's common, people know that those roads are closed, those barricades are up. When you start closing side roads like that, unless it's construction like what we have going on Third, um, that gets confusing to everybody because we're not used to shutting down things like that. Um, if it's a major event like a tree, we had a split tree here, I shut down the road for a reason, but there is, there is quite of a thing to just shut down a thing, uh, just that little square. And then I, I gotta call the Sheriff's Department, I've gotta do all that for a tree. I mean, for a party like this, and the other aspect of it is, um, what happens then when they put debris all over our road? Uh, do I have to go out there and clean it up afterwards?
Very good point.
Uh, I, I'm just putting in my two cents, I, I mean, it's a road closure to me.
Yeah.
For the people, I, I, I don't care anything about that, but I'm just looking at the aspect of the road closure.
I'm not crazy about it either.
And once again, it's not the people themselves, it's just the.
No.
Possibilities and precedents.
Yeah.
Busy area too, ours.
So then it would be the intention of a board not to, at this, if that's the case, we wouldn't bring formal applications for closures of streets for block parties?
That's, that's the part I'm gonna struggle with is when someone comes to the counter and says, here's what we want to do. I don't know that it's Wendy or my job to determine whether or not that's allowable. It's fill out the application, take it to the board, it's, it's your decision, it's not our safety.
Right, yes.
It's just, I've been down tightly, it just needs to be.
Yeah, and, and that's what I was just gonna say, and just a caution to make sure that it's in a very timely order.
And, and along with that, we should put in place more, more formal rules and requirements for such activities, whether it be, I don't know, whether it be ordinances or however our permit process is spelled out. Um, I think it's something we need to do. These, these things have had, I, I, you know, I know there've been lots of block parties in town, but nothing requiring street closures or, or.
Yeah, they can have the party, just don't.
Yeah, they can still have a party.
Home neighborhood parties. It's just when they come to us and ask, you know, this is what they want, it's like, well.
You're the bad person.
Yeah, it's like, well, it's not our decision, it's, it's, you have to.
It's up to the board.
It's up to the bad board.
And that's, they can fill the application out, but I think they gotta say, okay, it's gotta be, okay, they brought it in, you know, and didn't do it in Public Works Public Safety, right then, you should have had the right to say, this isn't gonna make it by the twenty-second, it's too late.
Either pick a date or.
I think the timeliness, you know, the street closure, we all, we need to work that out in a, in a formal manner that the applicant knows. And maybe even the, the time, the hours, um, you know, to allow them, you know, they're talking about, well, they got a lot of kids, well, kids don't need to be out after nine in block as far as I'm concerned. I don't know, dad, grandfather.
Who would shouldn't be out at eight thirty-nine anyway?
I shouldn't be out, no, uh, I don't think we should let them have their party, but.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to turn down the application as is, um, prior, uh, because we have to, we would have to block off the street.
Is this the best way to do it?
I don't know.
We just have motion to deny the application, this is a motion or, or just take no action?
No, I think we gotta take some action.
You could choose not to act and I guess it would, it wouldn't happen because they wouldn't get their permit, so it would have the same effect, but if you wanted to actively deny the use, then a motion would be.
I think we need to actively deny it because whoever has to let them know, whether it's Drake or whoever, that they've got the backing of the board. that they've got the backing of the board, I'll be gone, so... Just so we, you know, so they have, so they know the board's the one that denied the application.
And, you know, spell out the reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing, nothing personal.
You do that personally, Mary too, or do you call them, or how does this take place now?
Well, since this is going to be, was planned for Saturday, I think a phone call probably is...
I see she's got an email address in there too.
And I can phone her and then follow up with an email, so there is something in writing.
Give them Roger's phone number.
But, yeah, I wouldn't be afraid to type my phone number on that either.
No, I don't know. Tell them, you know, if they want any further information, feel free to call them, remember the board.
But I think it's, it's the man of us, between the four of us that...
Long as they know what it is.
We don't want it, we don't, this is all we're gonna know.
There's too many variables going on. You know, for the five houses that are there, four applicants, fifty to a hundred people, seems like a lot of people, so...
Yeah, that's a long block.
Ooh, college boys.
That's a lot of blocks.
So there's a motion on the floor, so we...
It must be going all the way, the whole of...
Yeah, may have a motion.
He made a motion, he needed a second.
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? If you're not all okay, we say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to deny. Okay, where do we add, okay. Discussion, consideration, authorizing to bid for major equipment purchase for Phase One of Nuclearis Utility Electrical System Improvements. So it's by you and Joe, huh?
Yep, so this is, several months ago, there was, the board approved moving forward with Phase One of the electrical system improvements. This is simply going up to bid to get pricing for the equipment order for that. So this is improvement to the existing plant, this is improvements that need, need to be done, regardless of any new, construction of any new substation or anything such as that. It's improving, improving, as a layman's term, the capacity of the system. It's right now operating at a four thousand, about four thousand volt system, this takes it up to twelve thousand, which allows more capacity over the same amount of wire. And also will improve the redundancy of the system because we'll be replacing the one Alliant transformer with three new transformers that are serving the system. So that if we're not only relying on the one transformer, that if that went down, we would need to get replacements. And then, as well, there's a letter from Forester Engineering in the packet, if you are interested. But there's also benefit, so we would not, it's a four to six month lead time to get the equipment, so payment would not occur until 2020, so we would have some time to determine when we would wanna do either a larger utility revenue borrowing, or if we would do a short-term construction loan with our local bank, until we could loop it all into one larger borrow to reduce transaction costs.
What do we have for funds now in the utility reserve? I've been told there's lots of money. And I can't decipher, you know, when I read the utility budget, I'm not an accountant, I can't decipher what's available.
The surplus account does show several hundred thousand dollars in the account. Some of that is designated for equipment replacement. Prior to purchasing anything, that is something we would review with both the auditor and Beth, and in the utility, to determine how much of that is available for purchase and how much of it... I think it's thirty percent of revenues, our auditor told us that we should be keeping in that, in that fund as surplus, according to general accounting principles. But we would certainly look at that as a revenue funding source for this project. We have some time before we have to make that decision, but I anticipate utilizing some of those funds for this electrical system improvement, whether it's for land purchase, equipment purchase, we would utilize some of it.
So for this purchase, what's the projected lifetime of this equipment?
Do you know lifetime on a transformer?
Years.
Do we agree?
You take like the transformer that's up there by Bloomin Ladens, behind Bloomin Ladens? That's a major transformer? I don't even know how old that one is, I mean, no, you're talking years.
As in ten, twenty?
Oh yeah, you're talking ten, twenty years, I think, on a transformer. Transformers are pretty good unless a major malfunction happens, where there's like an arm that comes through the line or something like that, you could take a transformer out, but they're pretty substantially, you know...
So would any of this be negated by any of the future projects with the new substation?
Well, these are improvements that would be necessary even if we didn't do a future project. From what I'm told from Forester, the four thousand volt that we're operating under now is a little bit of an outdated technology, and that he is uncomfortable with the fact that we're relying on that one transformer now, so even just purchasing the three transformers without even installing them gives him more peace of mind, because if that transformer were to go down, we would immediately have a replacement to bring in.
So right now, we're just looking for authorization to bid?
And then it would come back to the board to enter into an actual purchase contract?
Well, I would move, let me find some words. Authoriz, I would move the authorization to bid for major equipment purchase for Phase One of Nuclearis Utilities Electrical System Improvements.
Any further discussion?
Should note that these improvements will, once completed, will remove an annual cost that we are paying to Alliant Energy for the use of their equipment. No, it's in the letter, I think it's to the tune of almost fifty-one thousand dollars each. We'll be removing this as an annual cost.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see, we're at administrative report, village email addresses for trustees, Kerry?
So we have secured email addresses for trustees. There's an instructional sheet in your mailboxes. This ensures that any emails that board members send on the business of the village are a part of the archiving system. It essentially gives you all the same email functionality that village employees have. There will be a little bit, you will no longer have to, you know, utilize your personal email addresses, which would be subject to an open records request that we, and could be, if it ever led to a lawsuit down the line or anything like that, the judge could require access to those email accounts. And I think it also, just kind of adds a layer of protection to board members that those, if you accidentally delete an email, that email is archived. And that also gives the professional and appearance of conducting village business from a village email account. So they are set up and ready for use, you just have to log in. I believe it'll probably ask you to change your temporary password that's set up, but then you should be good to go. So we will start communicating with you via those email addresses. And we'll change the website to reflect those email addresses as well.
So that's as of, correct?
As of login, yes. If you have any issues, feel free to reach out to me. It's a pretty, it's accessible online, and it's a pretty intuitive interface. I think you'll find it relatively easy to use, but happy to help. If you use a smartphone, there is an Outlook app you can download and log in as well if you choose to have an email on your phone.
And is that, where would I find that at? Or should I contact you?
Do you use a, what kind of phone do you use? Is it Android or iPhone?
It would be Android.
It would be probably Google Play Store, where you download apps anywhere. You just search for Outlook, and it should pop up.
Yep, so this is gonna be under Outlook?
Yep, Microsoft 365, Office 365 is who we, what we use, so it's the Outlook, it should all go around.
Yeah, it doesn't mention how, oh, that's, okay, all right.
Okay, anything else about the email? Item B, we just wanted to treat the plant clarifier repair update.
If you got any other questions, Joe is here, but they have removed a piece of equipment that needs repair, they've taken it back, and they are in the process of taking it apart, identifying the issue, and then ordering the parts necessary to repair. So they have removed it from the plant, plant is still at full capacity, no issues there as of now, and we will keep you updated as it progresses.
Do you have, do you know, is Mike having to wease more often?
He is, he's, he's run the belt a couple of times, you know, we run it about once a week, and he did use up a little bit more because we're using the one clarifier. But Mike's been gone since last Thursday on vacation, so he'll be back tomorrow, so I'm sure he'll run it again, but we're sitting pretty even, I've been doing all the testing.
We're sitting pretty...
What's your voltage level?
About six, seven.
Too bad you know so much about that plant though, Mike. But it's a good thing, real good thing. Okay, is it on that? President's report.
What? I guess just one minute.
Okay.
I'll be out of the office at a professional development conference for the remainder of the week in La Crosse, so I'll be available via email, I'll try to respond as frequently as I can, but if you try to call me and I don't answer, or get back to you via phone, that's, that's where I'm at.
Hope it's good.
By the way, I'm gonna be gone from, I believe it is the twenty-second, twenty-seventh of June to around the evening eighth of July.
You told me you were gonna be back in time for the Public Works meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yep, I got that, we can...
Okay. President's report, discussion, consideration, committee appointments. Will, we still have one committee appointment, and that's on the library board, because I was given the name and that person declined, but I think in the interim, Bob Burden is still gonna sit in, and then when they find somebody, they will just, he will just resign.
He's still on the board?
Lend the thought...
Officially?
Lend the thought that he would serve, I haven't heard that definite from her.
He, he said he would, at the meeting.
Okay, till we find replacement.
Have him official until we, yeah.
So he is on the board, or do we have to re, senior looking to reappoint him?
Prove or reappoint?
Cause his term was up.
Yeah.
So...
So we should put it back on the list?
Yeah.
For timing.
Yeah.
We probably need an official board reappointment, I would imagine, hard to say.
Well, as we approve this and add, can that be part of the motion?
Yep, if his name's added to that list, and everyone's under that understanding, we approve that list, it's fine.
Make the motion to include that as part of it?
He can be included in a larger motion to approve that list.
So I'll move approval of committee appointments with the addition of Bob Burden on the fire department as submitted by our president.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just have one question, I was thinking with regards to historic. So I'm definitely on there, and I'm the chairman now, is that it?
That's what it says here.
Okay, is it on here somewhere, and I just didn't get to it?
Yeah, page one fourteen, about the middle of the page.
Mike answered chair.
Oh boy, here we go.
I gave you some goodies already.
These, some of these committees will possibly change once we get a full board or another board member.
That's my question.
You know, we're gonna make some changes. Well, I don't know, I mean...
We can, I think, approve the additions or changes as they happen.
And then just change it?
Yeah.
Prove this and then change?
I think we need to approve this, so we, so we're all, basically, and then once we get another board member, two board members on, and get up to full capacity, then we can, then I'll have to start over, basically.
Well, but, but you can just, I mean, what would be the procedure if, if we approve this, okay, and then we get another board member?
I think...
Or two?
My...
You, would you reappoint, redesignate committee member with approval of the board? And does that require a resignation by a current?
I think, let, let's just say in Mike's case, where he's chair of Historic Preservation, my understanding would be if, if somebody else wanted to chair Historic Preservation, and, you know, I probably have to go to Mike and say, do you still want chair? And if he says no, then he will probably have to resign, and then I'd have to appoint.
Or you can just do it by...
By appointment.
By your own appointment, say...
Or do they need a formal resignation?
Say, Mike, you're out, and...
Resignation's probably cleaner, I would have to relook at, because he's been appointed by the board at that point.
Right.
But the ordinances could stay differently, but I think you would...
Well, it's maybe nitpicking, but I'm just considering the agenda here. Let me do have an applicant, board member.
Along those lines here, I also see on Historic Preservation that my term expires, I have a three-year term, but it expires in 2020.
Well, you know why.
Am I taking over for previous chair?
Yeah, and I believe the board members always have to go by a year at a time.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine. I was just curious.
Oh, you already, oh.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Item B, adjourned and closed session on the state statute, considering person... Do I need to say all that?
Uh, we just need a motion to go into closed session and by roll call vote.
Before we do that, is that necessary? I just wanna know.
It is not required. No. The board can choose not to go into closed session, absolutely.
Anybody got any feeling on that?
Any action would be taken in open session?
Of course, of course.
But if they should, if the board wished to conduct this business in open session, it can certainly choose to do so.
And have a reservation about that?
I don't either. I would rather see transparency.
Then I would just announce that the board is electing to conduct the business on the item in open session. And I'll reopen the door.
Sorry, Greg.
Not a problem.
You didn't need to announce that, or did you do that?
I'm forgetting.
We're gonna turn that...
It's off, I'm, I wasn't gonna turn it, it needed to record the roll call vote, so I didn't turn it off.
Okay, Tammy, you can come up to the table, please.